The light's gonna come on. There it is.
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, July 16th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. We're at the Mashpee Town Hall, Coit Meeting Room 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We're being broadcast live on the local channel eight and 1072. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live on the town of Mashpee website, www.mashpma.gov backslash channel dash eight asterisk. And I believe we're zooming in, too. People are zooming in.
Not this evening.
Yes?
Not this evening, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand if you are able for this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. On the approval of the minutes of the meeting for June 18th, 2025, I see we have one set and then we have some changes that were made by Mr. Tobin.
Yes, the Department.
And I wasn't able to figure out what were the changes. Would you tell us what they are?
Sure, there's some light red lines in there. Let me just flip on over to the second.
Go to the back of the second set of the meeting, June 18th, and those are Mr. Tobin's messages.
Yeah, those are just some minor tweaks to ensure clarity regarding some technical matters. If you go to page two, the first.
Page two?
Yes, the first paragraph under Old Business Lot 1 Willow Circle.
Okay.
It just specifically mentions that the tree that had been cut down there that Mr. Balzerini and myself had observed was infested with pine beetles.
Okay.
And that's just to.
Fully noted.
Yep, just to show that there was no violation with the tree preservation by law.
Excellent. Yes, I'm mostly concerned about that.
Yep, we know that's an important one.
Anything else?
And then on pages three to four, we just tweaked a little bit the discussion regarding the industrial one zoning district and the potential process. Remember, if this board recalls, there were three options that were put before the board in terms of a bylaw to go as a warrant article.
What project were you gearing toward on that?
Well, so it was, it's for the bylaw warrant article. It was ultimately stemmed actually from the applicant that's before us tonight because we realized that when in I-1, if you're seeking waivers, there needs to be a more streamlined procedure for getting in front of the planning board. So at that meeting, we discussed two options that were presented in writing just before or, you know, with the packet, and then I had thought of a third option.
Was it specifically, I'm just trying to recall, was it specifically for the boat, the solar project on Falmouth Highway?
So it was, that is the project that led to the genesis of us addressing the issue, but the issue, because it's a warrant article for the zoning bylaws, will, when and if both passed by this board, the select board, released by FINCOM, and then voted on by the town at the fall town meeting, will then become how all applicants who want to seek waivers in the industrial one zoning district for medium scale and large scale ground mounted solar.
So the issue is waiver or special permit?
Yeah, whether or not to get a special permit for waivers and in which instances. And I think what the board landed on was we decided to go with the third option, which is they would come for a special permit before the planning board if and only if they wanted waivers. However, if they don't want waivers and they're in industrial one only, then they would simply do plan review committee.
Okay, thank you. Anything else in this?
I believe that's all the changes, Madam Vice Chair.
I have a motion to approve the June 18th, 2025 minutes of the planning board.
So be it.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Shall we vote? Rob?
Yep.
Yes.
Aye.
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 And I say aye. Thank you. Okay, we have the pleasure of our engineer here tonight. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair. It's been a couple of weeks with conflicts of my own and other boards, so I wanted to attend tonight. We don't have a major project that I'm reviewing at the moment, but I wanted to give you an update on a few things while we're here.
Okay, I'll wait on that. I would just like to do your invoices.
Oh, I definitely want you to do my invoices.
Okay.
About that.
We have two invoices, one dated 6/28/2025, invoice number 2025-2276 revised for Engineering Professional Services for the period of March 26, 2024 to March, pardon me, May 31, 2025, in the amount of $5,134.24. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Is that for Aquay Highlands on the upper right? It would have the project description.
Yes, I'm sorry. Project description and location, Aquay Highlands Construction Inspection Services.
Right.
Thank you. And we'll go to the second one and then we'll vote on both of them. The second one is invoice 2025-2277, invoice dated 6/24/2025, project location, South Cape Village, Building G, Engineering Peer Review Services. That would be for Chapultepec.
Roger.
Project, and it's, the amount is $2,158.02. May I have a approval on invoice, the invoice is so stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any objection?
Aye.
No objection. Pass, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will skip the approval not required. Is that what you'd like me to do, Mr. Tobin?
It may be wise to wait for the chair depending on. So I can, oh, wait, but Ed still had his report, so let's do Ed's report.
Pardon me?
Ed still had his report on projects.
The Aquay Highlands.
So I have not reviewed, I have not visited Aquay Highlands. It's the only place I haven't gone because as the last, as the last meeting that I was present for, the discussion was that some additional seeding would be needed on one of the detention basins on Carriage Road. That initial, the additional seeding was done, but it had not, you know, obviously not been in the last couple of, I want to say it started two months ago, and has been some seed taking, but it's slowly making its way. It'll be healthy and fine and stable, in my opinion, in a couple of weeks, but maybe another month. But I know that Brian and Dennis have gone out to the site, looked at that one detention basin at the far end of Carriage Road, and it's still growing in at the moment, and it's obviously a tough time of year for seeding, but he does have irrigation going there, so I have no doubt that it'll be in good shape when the time comes. I've not made any more inspections there. I fielded a phone call from him, but since there's, you know, obviously a need to watch the budget there, I've not spent any more billable hours on anything at Aquay Highlands. Really, the only thing that was left was the inspection that you guys did recently to look at the grass cover on the detention basin, and it's getting there, it's just not 100% there yet, apparently. I did get some pictures from Mr. Moore today. He did text me to let me know, and he did let me know he was on the fence about whether he's coming to the hearing. He couldn't, he had a family event. Apparently, he talked to Brian and decided against coming tonight.
Why don't you continue with this item?
Okay, all right. Mr. Tobin, do you have something you would like to say?
I would just second those comments effectively. Dennis and I did go out and look at things, and it looks at like one of the, one of the basins there could still use a little growth. I mean, both of them, but one more so than the other. So it's, I guess, just a matter of time to see if that growth actually happens.
Are we ready to sign off on the tripartite agreement?
Well, I would defer to a board vote there, and I would also defer to Mr. Balzerini's opinion.
I think we should hold the $2,000. The grass didn't look good at the, there's two catch spaces, like, and the first one with the big pile of dirt behind it, there's a lot of mud in it, and there's very little, it's not grass, they're weeds, but I don't think it matters what grows there because it takes up the nitrogen. But I like to wait till the fall to make sure that grass starts growing there, because we, and I'd like to see if we get rid of the pile. That's caused a lot of problems because when it rains, the mud's going into that thing, and it don't look good.
You're talking about the big dirt pile?
Yeah, it's right up against where the swills are.
Oh, yeah.
And he has a, he has a fence and some things, but you can see where the mud's running down on the edges because there's a little.
This is the attractive nuisance that nobody believes?
No, I think it's a nuisance.
Yes.
And it looks like he put, to me, it looks like he put more fill there, and he's using it for, because that pile was so big. Now it's this big, one pile, and in the back, he has a pile with a lot of, you know, trees and roots and stuff that he dug out, but I thought those were all gone when he was building those houses, and he was not taking the pile away. I would hold it $2,000, that's my opinion, and, you know, if you feel that way, you know, I appreciate the, because I don't want him to say the grass is there, and then next fall, people say, there's no grass there, and the water's.
I wasn't aware that he paid the $2,000.
So, so he has, he has not.
No.
What we're still holding back is approximately $89,000.
That's a lot of money.
Correct, but I did have.
He'd get all that back except for $2,000.
Well, so I.
That's what I don't understand. If, all he has to pay is $2,000.
Get that money back.
That was a bit of a brain teaser for me as well, although my conversation with Jac this afternoon helped to illuminate it a tad more. It turns out it's not actually his money sitting in the bank, it's really just bonded. I'm not sure I fully understand the intricacies of the finance behind it, but it's not as if he's getting a check for $87,000 when it gets released, but the bank is pressuring him to get the release, so.
Okay, what other opinions does the board have about whether we?
Well, I defer to Dennis and Brian, who don't seem to think it's where it should be just yet, and it's, you're right, it's a tough time to grow anything.
Yeah, right now.
And so if it's no skin off anybody's apple, we might as well hang on to the dough for a little longer.
And I'd like to see if we get them to get rid of those piles, not keep them there for months and months.
What's the purpose of that?
That's not part of.
I don't know.
But if they're filling up the area, the drain, that we're trying to see seeded, then, yeah, I think we can make a connection to say, get rid of the piles.
I, I think you should meet him on site to look at that. I will say that the last meeting, and in the pictures he sent today, but after the last meeting when he was here, and that was brought up, the very next day, he sent me pictures of silt fence installed around that stockpile of loam. And the picture he sent today shows silt fence around that stockpile alone, so that's not adding and contributing to erosion into the detention base.
He didn't show you the edges of that swill with his valleys that you can see the water running down.
Yeah, he did, he did. It's not 100% perfect yet, but it's not fully stable yet, but it's certainly getting there.
I don't think we even should go update him, but we gave enough time to take care of this, and it keeps blowing us off like.
I have a motion from you, Dennis.
Huh?
A motion.
I make a motion.
To take no action?
Take no action.
Table until the fall.
Until such time, what time?
Till the fall, we can see some grass growing.
First or second meeting in September?
Second.
Second, okay, we'll put this on the agenda for the second.
Second meeting, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. You're married.
Lovely. Sorry, I was late. Okay, so did we do the approval of engineer invoices?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Approval not required is next?
Perfect timing.
Okay. Let's see. I recognize the project proponent. If you could just state your name when you get to the mic and the company you represent.
Good evening, everyone. Melinda Costello, I'm with Weston and Sampson Engineers. I'm here on behalf of NextGrid. Their project entity for this project is NextGrid Tongue Oil LLC. And here in front of you tonight is an approval not required plan just to modify a lot line between 868 Falmouth Road and 27 Industrial Ave, owned by the same property owner. Oh, I see. G. Howard Hayes Trustees.
So it's, so it's a stapled packet, and there's a fold-out plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it looks like you're gonna, there's a.
So there's currently a property line going north-south, parallel to Falmouth Road, and what we're proposing is to rotate that going essentially west-east and connecting and running parallel to Industrial Drive.
Can you show us on the map since you brought a map? Thank you.
Yes, so this is the property line here, the existing property line that kind of runs parallel to Falmouth Road, and what we're proposing is just to rotate this and make this one continuous lot to the rear property line that used to be associated with 27 Industrial, and then this would be the new lot area for 27 Industrial Drive. All proposed areas, frontages are all consistent with the industrial zoning district.
Can I ask you, and you can use the mic, can I ask you, the lot that's being reduced on Industrial Drive, does the new area cause any problems, making anything pre-existing non-conforming or anything like that?
There's nothing on that existing lot.
Does it, does it maintain it as a buildable lot?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, so just for this board's information, in I-1, it's a 40,000 square foot minimum, which that exceeds by about 70%, the new lot exceeds by about 70% for overall lot area. And then the other dimension that this board would primarily be concerned with is frontage, which is 200 feet, which that lot already has precisely, it's already precisely at 200 feet because the frontage is remaining the same, they're just moving one line.
as not requiring approval under the subdivision control law is not a determination as to the conformance with Mashpee zoning bylaw and regulations. So it's got that. Anybody have any other comments or questions?
Project, they own both lots, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Map 88 is where the residential begins?
The southern property line is the division between where the residential district is and the industrial district.
So that's to the right of?
So it's this lot line here, this is residential.
Oh, I see. Oh, it's, oh, thank you.
Yep.
So with no other further comments or questions, I entertain a motion to endorse the plan as not requiring approval under subdivision control law.
So be. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
Good night.
Is that the only vote we need to take?
Yes, we can initiate discussion on waivers if you wanted to take it out of order, but we should also sign the large plans, which I believe we have copies of there, and then stamp them. I don't know if you want to do that now or at the end of the meeting.
We usually do it right now.
So let's do it right now.
Yeah.
Brian, I think the plans over there, those look like they're the Weston and Sampson title block. I think the ones that enter in your hand are the A&R plan.
Okay, so, sorry, well, you.
So is there a Mylar?
Which ones?
We, no, I didn't see a Mylar as part of the requirements. If you guys need to stamp a Mylar, I'm happy to bring that back. We're gonna be in front of you again at the first August hearing. I'm happy to bring them back then for signature.
I think this is the one we signed. This is the A&R.
All right. So we all have to sign it or does Mia?
No, I think we all sign it.
We usually do.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, I don't know if it says it in the rules about a Mylar, but we always get a Mylar to sign.
I know that's the old-school way of the registry of deeds, if they wanted to have a Mylar version to record. I don't know if that's still the requirement. Do you know?
God, it's been a while since I've even had to do an A&R plan. I have some other people in my group do it. I don't know the answer to that question. Good question.
I have heard from folks in the industry, but did not confirm with the ROD directly that Mylars are outdated and folks aren't using Mylars anymore, but I, you know, that didn't come from the registry, so.
So what do you, so what are these, to the registry?
I think, because everything's PDF now and on the internet, and there's all this new technology out there, I mean, I don't profess to.
Mylar was really done for the durability of the material, so it wouldn't fade or wouldn't degrade like paper would. I mean, before Mylar, there was something called vellum, which was a treated paper, was a blend of materials for that reason. But now Mylar was, took over, and Mylar was indestructible, for the most part, in storage of plans, but everything's electronic storage now. So she's, she's right, and you're right, that it's probably not, it's superfluous. The land court still might require it, for all I know. There might be a particular registry of deeds that does require it in Massachusetts still. I don't know. I would think that they're all the same regs, but.
Yeah, I think it's an easy fix if you need it, you know?
Yeah.
If you, if the applicant's content with this, I didn't see anything in our rules and regulations that requires to sign and stamp a Mylar, so.
While I have you here, though, could, I just get, you guys have been talking about this, but I'm new at this, this project. The zoning board is also reviewing this, as I understand it. The zoning board asked me for a quote to prepare a review, and so I'm a little confused why you're coming to the planning board as well?
Yeah, do you want to?
Sure.
So I can, let's sign, let's sign, and then we'll, we'll open up the next matter, which is gonna be this.
It's a second, it's a second agenda item.
Oh.
Certificate?
Yeah, so reason one is the A&R, which is definitely planning, so we're taking care of that right now, yeah.
Is a certificate of action?
Yes, there is. Do you have a, you have a copy of that, right?
I mean, I did scan your plans that was submitted, I don't know, a month ago, something like that, in a binder.
Do you usually use for A&R's the larger seal that says approved on it or the smaller seal? We'll use the larger one.
Can you pass that down to Brian?
Just for the waiver request that we're getting, and then the minor modification approval.
Rob does not sign it. Sorry, Rob.
Karen and Michael sign it. There's three copies, thank you.
Pass that to Mary for stamping. Don't you usually stamp it?
I, I don't, I've never stamped the plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can do it. Yeah, I've never.
I was, I was giving you the honor as chair.
Even though, like, I think you'd probably go over our signatures, I don't know.
Oh, I have one more question for the board. In, with the A&R application, there's a $100 fee. I have a certified check for that fee. Who's the best person to give that to tonight?
I'll take it. Hannah will drop it off and crack tomorrow.
Lead me to it.
So we'll pass that over to Brian, who shall distribute it. Because I think you must keep one.
Yes.
Yeah.
One for us, one for the clerk, one for the applicant, maybe one for ROD.
Was there more than one copy there, Brian?
Right.
You signed all three?
You had to sign all three.
I don't know if I did.
Maybe two.
Please.
Yeah, we're missing, we're missing, actually, a couple of them are missing. Well, one's missing two signatures, so I got Mary, Dennis, and.
You only signed one?
I only signed two.
Somebody else, I'm not sure who's got the one.
This is why I didn't start the next one, you know? Because for some reason, signatures, you know.
You have to, actually, you have to hit this one.
Take up a little bit of our time.
I just gotta go. How does it do it now? An hour later.
Yeah, because then we, that's, yeah. Okay, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so we are looking for new business in our packet. 868 Falmouth Road, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I only have a, I don't have an application. Does anybody?
Is it the binder?
Oh.
Plastic binder.
Thank you, okay. So the chair opens up the item under new business, 868 Falmouth Road, carport project and possible vote on project waivers. So the chair recognizes the project proponent. If you could again for the record.
Yeah, Melinda Costello, I'm with Weston and Sampson here on behalf of the applicant. NextGrid Tongue Oil LLC. And I can give a project overview if you would like. So the proposed project is to install carports with solar on top of them at the back end of an existing storage facility at 868 Falmouth. The project has gone through design and plan review committee review and their approvals. The reason why we're in the industrial zoning district and how the current zoning regulations are listed is that in the industrial zoning district, technically, you do not need to get planning board approval for large-scale solar projects. However, this proposed project, we are asking for a couple of waivers. And let me, I apologize, let me get to that section. The first waiver is related to the structure height. Because these are carport structures, the current, the zoning regulations for solar are really geared towards ground-mounted systems that have a lower height, and due to the, what they're parking underneath these canopies will be for RV storage and boat storage, they need a clearance on the lower end of 15 feet and on the higher end of up to 23 feet. So in the current bylaws, is a maximum height of 15 feet. So we're asking for a waiver to increase the height from 15 feet to 20, 23 feet, I think, is what is in the application. The second waiver is related to the setback. The setback, and again, let me just pull up the plans here. The setback for all property lines outside of the residential district is 25 feet, but because we abut a residential zoning district, the property line setback is 100 feet, and the carport structures do, are a minimum of 25 feet, but they do encroach within the 100-foot setback of a residential zoning district.
Say that again.
So the, the setback for abutting a residential zoning district is 100 feet. We, our solar carports are encroaching within that 100-foot zoning setback. We are greater than 25 feet, but are within the 100-foot setback line. So the second waiver that we are requesting is that we reduce the required setback along that residential property line. And I apologize, I wasn't prepared to present on this application tonight. I thought it was going to be continued to the next one, so I don't have the updated, the, the carport shifted a little bit in your application, so I don't have the specific distance that we're requesting, but it is in your, it's in your package, and I just don't want to misspeak.
You have a copy of it, right?
I have an outdated one from when I was at, if I don't, if you don't mind, I can look in it.
So, Madam Chair.
This is dated 331, is that updated?
It was revised by 7/8. So our required, we're asking for a maximum height of 23 feet and a proposed setback of 63 feet versus the 100 feet.
I was looking, and what's the, what's the number on the bottom of that plan?
C-101.
C, so I was looking at C-101. Okay. I can share with Dennis, you can, because I'm sure people want to hear.
And then the other reason why we're in front of the board, one of Brian's recommendations during the committee review was that because we are abutting a residential district and we're requesting a setback relief from that 100 feet, he wanted to open it up to the public and give them an opportunity to come and review the project. So we submitted a joint application for zoning board of approval as a minor modification to an existing special permit on the project, plus this waiver request through the planning board. And the, the, Mary Ann, the chair for, or the assistant administrator for the zoning board, has not yet sent her notifications out for her ZBA hearing in August. So I'd like to request a continuance until that August hearing, if that's what the board chooses, to let the public be a part of that notification that Mary Ann is sending out.
That would be great, and if you could, on C-101.
Yep.
Mark the distances.
They are there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think.
Well, I can't, the carports, I can't see the distance marked from the carport to the property line.
Oh, I see.
You mean, like, it is, I can see the 100-foot, and I can see the structures, see how the structures?
Yeah, so you just want a distance from the structure to the property line?
Yep.
Yep.
You mentioned 63 feet somewhere, right? Is that the closest one?
Yeah, there's a table on the, on C-101 in the top left corner.
That must be the closest one.
And that's the closest one, based on that, based on our dimensions. We just don't have a specific dimension on that carport, but I'm happy to add that to the plan.
Yeah, if you could do them on the, on the four that are bound there.
Yep, all four.
That would help.
Sure.
What are these here?
Those are existing structures.
Oh, all right.
Those are existing structures.
Yeah.
Would the, would the owner of the property be okay with us going to visit the property?
I would have to get back to you.
Okay, if you would just let Brian know.
Sure.
I think that might help a little bit.
We also did a glare analysis during the review process, just to confirm that the existing structures, the tilt angle, there's no tree clearing proposed along the southern residential buffer associated with the project. There's greater than 125 feet from existing structures, that's another requirement for the solar bylaw. Where, we're outside of that buffer, you can see that as the dotted line, it's kind of like circle, a circular shape to the south of the property line. We're outside of those buffers, the glare analysis confirmed that there's no, there's no glare observed from those structures as well.
And then for that, for that, our next meeting on this, I'll ask you to run through operation and maintenance.
Yes.
Plan, and then also, under Appendix B, current site special permit.
Mm-hmm.
There's like a letter dated from 2009, if you can go through the history of that letter and the special permit attached to it.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't want you to answer them now, because it'd probably be better after it was publicly advertised.
And then just for the record and for your knowledge, because I think you're going to be doing a peer review.
For the, for the ZBA, same thing, same application.
I just want to let you know, and Brian too, during the committee reviews, the fire department was there, and there were a lot of discussions about the turning radius and concerns about going under and through, through foundation posts. We took that into consideration and went back to the property owner and tried to adjust the layouts a little bit. And what we did was we pulled the, we pulled the system to the north a little bit more to give the fire department clearance around the entire system, so that there is no conflict with structures or foundations and their turning radius. So there's an updated turning analysis exhibit.
There is?
Yes, yep, there's a fire truck turning exhibit as part of your package. If, did you get one?
I did, but it's been three weeks since I got it, and I wasn't released to start work, I just had to get a proposal, so.
Okay.
I'll speak to Mary Ann. Have you submitted that to Mary Ann and Brian?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And it's a separate fire truck turning exhibit, EX-1 is the exhibit that shows the, the turning, it shows the tires and the rim of the fire truck and a scenario lift truck that we designed.
So repeating what you said, you moved some of the, some of the carports?
Yep, we shifted them to the north a little bit to be tighter to that 20, 25-foot setback to allow more room. They're gonna adjust the fence line, the exist, there's an existing fence line that you'll see on the existing conditions plan. The owner agreed to move that fence line and provide some more clearance for a fire truck. There's a stockpile that he's also going to move, just to give more room for a fire truck to, to navigate around the structures without going underneath them.
And that fire truck exhibit shows that.
It does.
But the other plans have not been updated.
Those do too. So if Mary Ann's shared with you the same package that was.
Can you give us the date of the current set of plans?
Yes, of course.
Just so we're all on the same page.
July 8, 2025 is the most current set of plans. It's revision three.
Okay, if I don't have those, I'll, I'll reach out to Mary Ann. We should just share business cards, and I can request that from you through Mary Ann.
I'd be happy to share those.
Revision number three, okay?
Yep.
And Ed, not to pressure you time-wise too much, but if you're able to get the, your analysis for the ZBA before August 6, if you could send it over to our board as well, so we could put it in our meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I, she said she was gonna run it by the board, the proposal, the quote that I put together, and run it by the board at the next meeting, I just don't remember if it was this week or next week.
Okay.
I, I'll, I'll reach out to her tomorrow morning.
Okay, I believe, I believe.
If that's the case, I gotta get going on it.
Okay, I believe the applicant already funded a 53G account for it.
They did.
So, so it should be.
So I should just start?
Yeah, I mean, call her, but I don't see any reason to not.
Got it. I haven't even looked at the site, just waiting to do that, but I'll, I'll be happy to go over and take a look at it.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that fire report?
That should be included in your package as one of the attachments.
With the.
The turning analysis.
It's just a new exhibit plan, it's not a report.
And what we'll do for our August 6 meeting, since everybody already has hard copies of these materials, unless there's any updates, but assuming there's no updates between now and then, we'll just repost the E versions online for the meeting packet online, rather than reprinting everything or asking the applicant to reprint everything.
So where is the fire turning radius? Do you know what?
Um, sorry, I don't remember. It's on a certain plan.[1766.83] Oh, it's a part of the attachment app, the O and M plan.
Oh.
It's right here. So you can see that the red dashed, the red.
What's the number on that?
EXH1, you can see the red lines going from from the entrance off of Falmouth Road, straight down through the existing storage facility.
Where does it come from?
And then it comes, the fire chief agreed that he didn't need complete access to the back end of the site, that we can come in between Array 3 and Array 4. So we come in between those and up to the north of that canopy with no conflicts underneath the actual canopy, that the rectangle is the outer limit, so the.
It's in F. Can you draw the red line for us?
Yeah, is it hard to see?
And if you if you open up the map, the color map.
The red line.
It's the red dashed line.
This is one side.
It's the last page in the binder.
Of the tires. The very last page. And then it comes up and around, it comes back through here, and then this is the other side. The tire path.
Oh, there's no three-point turn.
No, it's complete 360-degree access.
Looks like they hit this though.
Okay, great.
That's the new fire truck turning template that you referred to.
Yeah, and the one that you might have, you'll see like there's a bunch of Xs in here, and that was because we would have to dedicate no parking zones underneath the canopy to allow the fire truck to get in.
In turn.
In turn, and he had reservations about that, of it just being followed.
That could be an issue.
So we took that into consideration and and talked with the property owner and kind of adjusted the layout to avoid those conflicts and came up with this. So that's those are the minor revisions from when the the committee saw it.
So I'm looking at EXH1, just the red line touches the building, so how how does that work? You can look at Dennis's.
Yeah, so it's you, on the aerial image, it looks like it touches the building, but we're using the surveyed, like the actual surveyed limits of the building, and aerial imagery within the system is just it's not as accurate as actual survey data.
Yeah, I've got one of those cars that, you know, it wiggles when you go off, and I'm like, oh, it doesn't have, sells sandwich right.
Anything else I can point to?
Thank you.
I actually had one question that's similar to that too, regarding the last two panels there, it looks like there is some sort of obstruction present where the fire lane is? I'm not sure what that is right there.
So all the existing, there's existing like Connex boxes and RVs and everything back there, those will all have to be removed by the property owner before we start constructing.
Sure.
Okay.
I had a question. On the the panels, my limited experience with solar seems to have the panels facing south, the south, and north on the plans is is straight up, and south would be directly at the residential areas. But there's a detail on there that shows the panels on the panels to be kind of zigzagged, so not, let's say, optimum.
Right.
And is that to reduce glare, or?
It's just to, it's, you're correct, optimum efficiency of the panels is due south, you're going to get the most exposure to the sun with any solar panel. This layout is is augmented in a different direction, just due to the nature of the site and where the carport structures need to be. So they're just going to lose efficiency with the panels, they're not going to get that due south optimal sunshine exposure on the panels, but they're still going to be aligned with the carport system itself, they're not going to be due south.
Okay. I thought maybe it was to reduce the glare on the residential.
Not not directly, no, it's more it's more just directed to the the existing use of the the site.
That's a good selling point.
It is a good selling point.
Anything else, knowing that we'll be submitting our final comments in our next the next time we talk about this? And I'm going to ask Chrissy to make really detailed notes about our discussion we just had, because then we'll throw it in the record the next time we open the item, okay? Thank you.
So is the next thing going to be a public hearing?
No, but the, well, Brian, would you explain that?
So it is technically a public meeting that will be noticed simultaneously with the ZBA's public hearing for the minor modification.
So it'll it'll be a pub it'll be a minor modification, application to the ZBA, but the notice is going to is going to.
Going out like a public hearing notice.
State that we are also.
Correct.
Discussing it on a date certain and a time certain.
The notice in the papers and being mailed to the abutters, as well as the abutters to abutters within 300 feet, will have both this planning board meeting on August 6, as well as the ZBA meeting, which I believe is the following Thursday, not the immediate, not the Thursday of that same week, but the next week's Thursday. So that would be like the 14th.
It's a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing?
Right.
So we're we're just to the public, we're, this project came in and it's resulted in a change to our a proposed change to our zoning that would make something like this easier to process and have an official public hearing. But I I have to say that I'm very happy that the zoning board of appeals and the planning board are going to publicly notice this and send something directly out to the abutters, and we appreciate that the applicant, you know, participating in that, so that everybody will have a chance to comment, all the abutters will have a chance to comment.
Yeah, we were rather fortuitous, I mean, this was a good test case for I-1 with waivers, and it allowed us to troubleshoot and tweak, you know, make a minor procedural, what's ultimately a procedural adjustment to a very well-crafted bylaw, so.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay.
I just have one question for you. You mentioned wanting to add the the dimensions physically on each carport to the property line. Do you want that change made and submitted formally to the planning board prior to the next meeting?
That would be great.
Okay. Yep, we can do that. Do you want, and then, sorry, another question, do you want another full-size set, seven plans submitted, or 11 by 17? How would you like that?
If you could just have an insert would be fine.
Sorry.
Save the planet.
Save the planet.
I think the I think the tabloid size is fine for this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Because you get Ed whatever he wants.
I wish I wish more boards would say that, when I'm when I'm faced faced with that, you know, you you should bring full-size sets in case there are questions, obviously, so you can refer to it with a scale, whatever.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll close that item, thank you very much.
Would you like your copy of?
Should we vote to continue? Well, I guess because it's not a public hearing, we don't have to. Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry.
You're not going to vote on the waivers tonight, right?
Nope. Nope.
Oh, no, I meant vote to continue, but then I remembered it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to.
I know, it's a quirky little odd thing, but.
You just got to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and if you and if it's a, oh, thank you, if it's a time certain in the newspaper advertisement, we should put it on a time certain on our agenda, that's all.
Great.
All right. So let's go back to old business, South Cape Village Special Permit Modification Appeals periods, so I'm assuming the appeal period has passed and now we can sign the special permit?
Correct.
Do you have you have that paperwork?
I have the original here. I'm going to go ahead and just pass around the signature page to avoid confusion.
Yeah.
The original signature page is here in this middle folder. Were you seated on South Cape or not?
I was seated on South Cape, wasn't I?
Yes. I believe so.
Yeah, because Mike was out.
Michael wasn't here, right?
Mike, did you vote on Chipotle?
He was off gallivanting.
No, I didn't vote on Chipotle. I.
Did I?
Chipotle, I know. Yeah, so Rob was seated, and so he signs.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the decision now, and Rob was seated, so.
Can I take one more?
Yes, of course.
And I forgot to mention, if there's anybody in the public that wants to comment on anything, just raise your hand upon that item. Sorry, Lynn. Okay. Okay, so schedule public hearings for proposed zoning amendments.
My apologies, Madam Chair, at the request of the applicant on South Cape, we did want you to put the date of your signature by, yeah, great. So not not the date of the board vote, which is up at the top and is already in there? The applicant just asked that. By your signature, we have the same date that the notary notarized it, even though it's, you know.
Mary insert.
Fairly clear from the wording, they just wanted it as added.
They want it by my signature?
Just just the same date that the, I believe it was the 16th that you signed and it was notarized, because it mentions the board vote date, which was, you know, as it normally is, about a week ahead of time, so.
So they want me to date my signature?
Yeah, just underneath, you can just write it on. And they're just concerned, they're worried about having any issues with the ROD, although I've informed them that we do this on all our special permits and nobody's ever gotten rejected, so, but, you know, RODs, RODs can be.
Day is this, what, is this the 30th day?
Not today's date, we're not, we're doing it the date that she actually signed it.
Is it okay?
Yep.
I think we're good.
Okay, all right, so we have some proposed zoning amendments, and we need to schedule the public hearings. So this is for October Town Meeting?
Correct.
And October Town Meeting, is it the first Monday?
I believe so.
Have you have you figured out what would be a good time?
Well, I think the planning board can pretty much do it at any time between now and then, and I would recommend at least a month beforehand. I don't think we need to necessarily, well, actually, I'll defer to Mike, he used to be on FinCom, and he looks like he has some input.
Go ahead, keep going.
I don't think we necessarily need to align the timing of our approval with the other boards, although last time we did it after, there was.
But next meeting then.
Well, do you want to do it in the first the first Wednesday of September?
Sure.
I think that's wise.
What day is that?
Yeah, I think it's easier for people to get.
Yeah, and then that way, if there's any fine tuning that needs to happen.
Yeah, you got a month.
Back from either FinCom or the Select Board.
Yep. I'm sorry, I have to text my daughter, I'm in a meeting.
Seven 10.
Seven 10?
Yep.
And we can we can have a start time of 7:10 for all of them?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
For all the public hearings.
For all the articles.
Articles. There's three and a fourth, right?
And and then the Select Board will start reviewing those, and FinCom does too. Brian, are you are you going to attend those meetings, or do you need us to?
If I'm asked to, I will. Sometimes they go right through and there's not a problem, sometimes FinCom has questions and puts a hold on it, sometimes the Select Board wants clarity, so if I'm asked to, I will.
Okay. All right, so I'll take a motion to set the public hearing date as September, what was it?
Third.
Third, at 7:10.
So be.
Their second?
Second.
All on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Updating guidance on how to submit written or verbal comments to the planning board. Okay, so this is something I wrote probably about six, five or six years ago. And it was just to make sure that anything that came in to Town Hall got to us. So we started a an email that, Brian, you see, right? We're looking for, you know, comments, written comments being hand-delivered to arrive to the Planning Department the Friday before. Anything mailed has to be postmarked seven days before the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think given the policy that I've been pushing since I started here, I would recommend everything in being in at the latest the Wednesday before.
Okay, I'm good with that. Everybody good with that?
Electronic or otherwise, I mean, we're trying to really keep that tight. I know we had a couple of weeks where there were a couple of hiccups in a row, but it was also a very busy season for the department, and some last-minute things came up from other departments to get on the agenda, lest there be serious consequences for the town on a federal level.
So seven days, you'd have to receive the letter or the email?
Yeah, any anything you want in on the packet.
Doesn't matter where the postmark is, it has to be in seven days ahead of time, that's fine.
That sounds good.
Yeah, actual receipt, yeah, actual receipt, electronic or otherwise. I mean, that's how we, because the packets finalize, I mean, we're trying to keep the ship as tight as possible, while being flexible in certain instances, you know, particularly for town departments meeting state or federal laws and regulations, but, you know, the package should really be finalized Friday morning at the latest.
And then people can always submit written comments during a public hearing.
Yeah, or you can ask a neighbor to come to the public hearing and read read your letter if you weren't able to get it in on time, you know?
Right, it's it's so if you if you if you get the written materials in by the Wednesday before.
Right.
What happens is staff is able to put them in the packet.
Right.
Right? But if we have a public hearing on something, you could you, written or verbal comments have to be accepted.
At the hearing, right?
At the hearing, during the hearing. And then, and I think we're doing super good with minutes, we're getting those in plenty of time. Our engineer sometimes doesn't get plans to, you know, and a timely manager should just do the best you can for us. You know, most of the time, it's in it's in our packet, I think.
No, I pay a lot more attention to what is sent out, not knowing, you know, the way Brian does it, he packs it all up in a in a link, and so I scan through everything now and make sure there's nothing there that I need to make sure I I worry about. I knew the 868 Falmouth Road was on tonight, and I know you guys want to have an update on my inspections, which I guess we'll get to in a second here.
Well, I think, yeah, I think with like ongoing matters, when new materials come in, unless it's something that we know is going to, like, I try to, if something comes in for an ongoing matter, and like, let's say it's a sweatpath analysis, and we know we're going for a vote next Wednesday, I try and get it over to Ed like right away, like Island Pickle. So there there we're going to be some like flexible, like a new project, we also try and get Ed as soon as it's received.
Give me a heads up that it's.
Usually tell the applicant to CCU when they send it to the department.
Yeah.
If that ever doesn't happen, then we should definitely fine-tune that. But with ongoing applications, when it's like small things, like small updates, usually try and get Ed's approval before it's even in the packet, so. But if that's ever not happening, let us know, Ed, and we'll definitely, you know, definitely make adjustments.
I'm trying to remember the recent one that I just didn't realize was in the packet and that you needed to get update on. I think it might have been something, it wasn't Island Pickle, because we were always on top of that, we had to get.
Yeah, yeah, that was a big one. I mean, when you're when you're doing the largest commercial real estate building on the Upper Cape, you know, you're acting in real time on everything you get, you know, so.
And I had a lot of balls in the air with that one.
Yeah.
Traffic and everything else.
Yeah.
Okay, and then guidance on how to submit verbal comments. The planning board accepts verbal comments during duly advertised public hearings. The planning board may accept verbal comments at public meetings. I think that should stay the way it is. Guidance on how to request an item or presentation be placed, sorry, on an upcoming planning board agenda, I think that that should be made in writing one week before the planning board meeting. That way, we have time to put it on the agenda. Sound good?
Yep.
Anything else? We, the Planning Department targets Friday, what, noon to have the packet ready?
Yes, well, the e-version, we typically try and finalize Friday morning at the latest.
Yes, okay.
We're targeting noon to print them by now.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
The, the link is ready.
Yep.
By Friday noon.
Yep.
And then there's efforts to have, I know there's one member who likes to pick up her packet Friday afternoon, by Friday afternoon.
Three thirty to four o'clock, or two minutes to four.
Which is why we're actually trying to print them by noon now, so they're, they're sitting there, and all the ink is dried by the time Karen shows up.
And then, um, it is, it's an electronic link. So I know that you post the agenda. You know, I, I think you post the agenda on the back door, you're posting it with the town clerk within 48 hours, more than 48 hours, I'm sure.
Yeah. I mean, we usually post it on Friday for one day.
On, on the website at all?
Yeah, so usually, I mean, it's usually posted, my understanding is, and again, I've, I've let Hannah really take over this world. But what I was, what I was doing prior to her taking over, and I believe she's carried that torch, is a stamped version of the agenda after it's posted in, in two places in Town Hall, or three places, the clerk takes care of that, is then included at the beginning of the meeting packet, so you have the stamped version of the agenda as the first thing in the meeting packet, and then I believe there's also a separate place on our webpage where it's posted.
So let's see. Okay, yep, it's there, so you scroll all the way down, or you're on a laptop, it's kind of over to the right, Planning Board Calendar. And there it is, there's the agenda. Now, is there any way we can start posting the packets there as well?
I can ask Hannah, she's, she's running that world.
Right.
And, yeah, I've given her kind of free rein, so I'll, I'll see if it's possible.
We get the link electronically.
I don't know why you couldn't, she's, she'd be able to just.
Yeah, it's just that, folks may be, my only thought there is folks may be accustomed to going to the meeting packets link, you know, so.
Well, we would.
Right.
It's to post it for the public to look at.
Well, there's, when you go to the webpage, there's like the key link section on the left, and the meeting packets is one of them.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, the packet shows up there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's not just going to you guys, it's up online for everybody to look at.
Alright, so, um, alright, so where is it on the website?
How do you find it?
It's to the left, it's either on the department or the board.
It's open up.
There's a link, it just says, it just says meeting packets.
They're blue, it's the blue list over, on your, on your laptop, it's gonna be.
Meeting packets by date.
It's gonna be over to the left, but it's on my phone, so it's taking up everything.
So you click on that, and then you click on 2025, and then you click on, the latest date is at the top.
Great, I know, I know that, yeah, perfect.
Yeah, that's, that's actually the link.
I didn't know that's where they were.
I was wondering, I was like, what's going on?
There it is.
Why the microscope? But, yeah, no, so, that link that you guys get is actually the equivalent of having clicked on the precise date, it's the same link.
Three hundred and thirty-one pages.
Can we get some tablets, so we can.
Right.
Trees, and just have these.
Three hundred and thirty-one.
Yeah. Look at these. That's actually a really good idea.
So it's something, it's something to think about. You know, if you, if you only want an electronic packet, you have to bring, you have to have a device here. The problem with that is public meeting records can, people can say, well, I want to see your tablet.
Well, yeah, but so.
That's why.
Dale actually has a great idea, I mean, I think, I think it would be a minor departmental expense to potentially come up with like, seven, you know, since, some, some.
Yeah.
Some of, the board members may want to keep, keep it the old fashioned way, the hard copy, I mean, I personally will have a hard copy, I recycle, I do recycle. But I, I would like to have a hard copy, because I like to take notes and separate things out and, and spread out my space. And, but if board members, if board members would prefer to have tablets, I mean, I think that's a reasonable.
I'd like to try a tablet.
A reasonable department expense, you know.
Okay.
So we'll do two, two test tablets?
I was gonna bring my laptop, because I usually do that, my laptop.
Right, you just, you have to be very careful, because if it's something controversial, they can say, I want to see everything on your laptop, and then.
Like, everything?
Everything.
Wow. Well, that's why if you have a designated.
Bring in my lap.
So that's why town, right.
Tablets would, I would co, distribute them and collect them, just like I do the packets, and we take them back, so you don't put anything on them. And only Planning Board stuff is on them, and if you want to inspect the tablet, great, all you're really doing is inspect, I mean, it would be a blank tablet, because you guys would just be clicking on the links, or potentially downloading the PDFs, so you're asking to inspect the same thing that's up on the webpage in perpetuity, so.
I think, I think we have three trial tablets.
Alright, we'll look into that, I, I mean, I think, um.
If you've ever gone to the council room for the town of Barnstable?
Yep.
They have them built in.
Uh, that's pretty cool.
There's tablets right there, they're built in.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. I mean, we don't want to show up other boards, we'll, we'll do a test run and I'll, I'll check with Rodney, I'll check with Rodney first to make sure it's okay, I'm sure he won't have a problem with it, but, you know.
Alright, so do you guys want me to retype this up for vote at the next one, the next meeting?
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Planning Board meeting start time, we had a request to start at 6:30, I'm hoping we can, I'm, I'm fine with that happening, starting in September?
I like the seven, but.
You do?
I like five better.
Clock is out.
Oh yeah, I can't make it, there's no way, 6:30.
How's everybody feel, I mean?
I can go, I can go 30 minutes.
What about Mike?
I, the earlier, the better. We had finance committee meetings at five, that I, I was home for dinner.
Yeah.
Now I got my next door neighbor eating my ribeye right now.
It's terrible.
Terrible.
What about Dale?
I like the earlier the better, too.
Alright, let's go 6:30 then.
Alright, let's try 6:30, starting in September.
But not Rob, we didn't ask Rob.
Starting in September?
Six thirty works for me.
Because I like to swim.
Okay, excuse me.
I told you that last time.
I don't want to start in New Orleans.
No, alright, 6:30, Rob, let's try it out, okay.
What's the date, the first meeting?
Yes, September 3rd. So, starting in September, I'd accept a motion that's starting in September, the Planning Board meetings will start at 6:30.
So be.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, Christie, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Until, until then, are we starting at seven?
Yes.
Yep.
And Brian, will you let the town clerk's office know?
Sure.
Alright.
Madam Chair?
Hmm, yes.
Could you go back a couple items and get to the board engineer report, so I can finish up?
Oh, I thought you were done, okay, go ahead.
We never got to it.
Sorry.
We got to Aquay Highlands, that's as far as we got.
Board engineer's report, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to give you guys an update on a couple of things, so I'm reviewing, I'm inspecting three sites, actually four. Island Pickle is one of them, but there's really nothing going on but building construction right now.
Yeah, they got the steel all up.
The steel's up, then, there's no other, no other site work. 474 Main Street, 31 of Schumit, the building is up, I was there Friday, the site work is, for the drainage system, is 90% done. It is now low man seating going on in the detention basin area, it actually looks pretty good. In front of the building, the industrial wastewater holding tank had been set, I inspected that, and looked at all that on Friday. And they're gonna continue to work on the building, they're gonna be pouring concrete in that building, and, and setting all the various alarm systems for the floats in that tight tank, so there's a alarm in the, in the, it's two tanks in one, basically, so there's a a float to detect any leaks between one wall and the other, and inner and outer wall, then there's a float inside at the 75% flow level, volume level, that kicks on, says it's full, time to empty. I also went down to, we're, we're, we're still waiting, there's really no change in over a month, at Osprey Court, they've got the, they got the gravel base, road, road base down, they're really waiting to finalize that and get the paving, first coat of, binder coat paving down, so it's still awaiting that, he said he would let me know when they were getting close. I know that they're probably putting fires out on another project, is why they're not doing that.
There was a pickup truck down there today, way at the end.
Oh, there was?
Yes, and there was a guy, I don't know if he was setting up a transit or, but when I drove by, I looked in there.
Yeah, because it does need to be tuned up, the gravel needs to be tuned, it's just sitting there for over a month, so. Just needs to be readied prior to construction, prior to pavement. Country Club Estates, we've had some forward progress on that, in our last episode, we wanted to meet with Mr. Marsters. Dennis volunteered to, to be a representative from the board, we actually had that meeting on last Thursday, the 10th. Here in the office, and I think it was quite a productive meeting. A number of things came about on that, we decided that some additional work needs to be done on the safety of that intersection that they built. So I took it upon myself, volunteered to put together a little sketch plan, which I sent out to everybody.
Thank you.
And says, here's the signage we need to have. So the, the reason for that meeting was twofold, number one, to go over the third phase of development, the changes to the third phase of development that they wanted to make. And they had their design engineer, they actually had their consulting engineer, it wasn't a design engineer, the design was done 20, 20 some odd years ago. And that design engineer is not, no longer on the project. So he noticed that the pitch in the stormwater system was very shallow, very, very small, very hard to build a small, you know, almost flat pitch. And he wanted to increase that pitch, so he changed a bunch of elevations, and I asked him to change it a little bit more, as you know. He agreed, so he's gonna provide us updated plans, and that's what they'll build off of. We did express some concern about having the grade around the road not be too low, below the lots. So the, again, the grade of the road is significantly, right now, the, the subbase of the road is, in some areas, five feet below the grade of the lot. But it's before they build up the road and put the rest of the road system in, so it may only be three feet below, which would be fine, you could build a driveway up to that house and pitch away from the house, all the drainage works, everything'd be fine, it just, I expressed concern about it at the time, now, I've asked them to increase the pitch in the, the slope in the, in the pipes to drain better. And that'll increase the height of the road a little bit more. So, all in all, that was a positive discussion, they agreed with, they had their engineer there, he's agreed to mark, to, to change the plan a little bit more, and increase that pitch. Then we discussed the entrance to the Country Club Estates at Lane at Old Barnstable Road, and the safety considerations around there. And some of the safety considerations involved signage and, and pavement marking, I found it ironic when I blew up that, that, that plan, the original plan from 20 some odd years ago. The signage was on the plan, that he never installed, they'd never get around to install, there was a couple of stop signs and stop lines that never got installed. So I made sure that was put on there, but really, when I walked the site on Friday, I walked the site the very next day, you know, and then I drove out, I practiced driving out. You can't put the stop sign right at the end of that triangle, because it'll obstruct the view looking up Barnstable Road on the right. So it's gotta be set back, the sign, the do not enter sign and the stop sign is gonna be set back, you do have to think about this, you, it doesn't, you, you don't have to, you don't think about it when you're drawing it on a plan. But it does obstruct the safe site distance, because that's the, that's the area, that, that's the direction where traffic is coming down the hill from Route 151. And that the entrance is, is a little bit unsafe at that turn. We discussed how the, there was a design for a turning lane there and a widening of that intersection. I, I think the way we left it was that, that wasn't on the table right now, but that we thought that the town should, as a, I guess as a recommendation, to approach the golf course operator of the Quasana Valley Golf Club, to help trim the vegetation on the inside road inside of that turn. So away from the entrance to Country Club Estates, because that's the area that's, that's the, that's the problem of prevent, it's, the current vegetation is overhanging the road, or close enough to the road where it's preventing safe site distance, both for approaching traffic from 151, and from exiting traffic, looking at that, from, approaching from that direction. Pretty much, when you come down from 151 towards Country Club Estates, you really have to pay attention to the oncoming traffic on, on Old Barnstable Road, before you decide to turn left. Because that road, that, that, that traffic is coming.
Right on a bend.
It is, terrible, terrible spot.
Terrible.
What's the rate of accident there, do you know?
Yeah, that's a good question, I, I, I don't know if that's managed by the state, or if it's just managed by the town, or the police department. But I, it's, it's not a state road, so sometimes the state will keep track of that crash data, but I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Good question. But I think it behooves us to get at least, I don't know, I don't know, Brian, where did we leave that with him, do we, were we gonna ask the DPW director to send a letter, or the town Select Board to send a letter to the, to the, to the Quasana Valley Country Club?
Dennis, you were there, I, I thought we were gonna circle back, I know Kenny was, he said he was gonna take, well, yeah, but he was gonna take responsibility for the striping and the signs, which are on the way, which I believe he owns either in fear, has an easement on, you know.
Correct.
He.
He volunteered to pay for and take care of all that.
Yeah, he was gonna take care of all that, the.
Wouldn't you involve the police department in something like this, to make sure they know what's going on, I mean, they're involved in all these accidents, they have a history, obviously, of this particular area.
Sure, we could have, we could have dialogue with them.
Good to include them in the conversation.
Could have dialogue with them, I don't see any harm in that.
Exactly, is the stop sign, as, as you're coming up Old Barnstable toward 151, where is that stop sign going to be?
The stop sign is gonna be on Country Club Estates, when you exit the development, onto Old Barnstable, the stop signs will be placed there, that's the only place they'll be.
Well, yeah, so that's where it was going, but there was also discussion about a stop sign, like a turnout lane and a stop sign on Old Barnstable.
Or stop line, at least, yes.
Or stop line, yeah.
Correct, a separate turning lane, so you could turn into Country Club Estates, there's an actual drawing that Country Club, Club Estates consulting engineer prepared several years ago with Charlie Rowley. It shows it would be called, would call for widening of the road, and it would involve some town action to widen the road, and to take part of that, you know, layout, I, I don't know, we, that, that's a whole separate, longer term discussion.
That, that plus the clearing on, the clearing that Ed was referring to is on the inside of that curb, you know, across the street of Old Barnstable Road. Those two things are gonna require looping in other parties, either in the town, or, you know, other private property owners. So we didn't really, I don't think we landed the plane on those two issues, but there was discussion around them. What we did land the plane on is Kenny's putting in those stripes and he's putting in stop signs, so that three-way, you know, the three-lane entrance and exit with the double one on the right, if you're going in, and then the single ones on the left, is gonna be a lot more clear, which is the issue that Dennis has been raising for a little while now, so.
Ed, coming out, going up to 151.
Yep.
The trees there gotta be cleared back right 10 feet or so, because when you're coming out, you can't really see what's coming down the road.
Yeah, but they're coming down the road is on the other side of the lane.
Yeah, but at nighttime, they may, they may be not on that, they may be more over to here, somebody comes out, it's dark, they can't see nothing. And they could, you know, be too close, that's not a very wide road. It's not a very wide road, but.
So when you exit, when you exit Country Club Lane.
Yeah.
There's a dedicated right turn lane to 151.
Right.
There's no need to cut any trees back there, there's no obstruction of the view.
Yeah, I think so, I.
No.
When I look there, I see like, these trees should be cut back.
I mean, maybe, maybe it doesn't hurt to trim them, I don't.
Me and Charlie went out there a couple of times.
Okay.
And that was one of the things, we kept on our, clear back some of these trees here, just to give you more sight, you know, but.
Yeah, I'm certain, I, it certainly wouldn't hurt, I'll go take another look, when I'm out there again, Dennis, I'll pay attention to that, take a picture, I, I was out there, I did not look at that, that view.
I asked Kenny, who old pay pier pro, that's the, when you come out the first right. And he said, La Cava, La Cava.
La Cava.
La Cava owned it, I said, can I talk to him, to kinda clear some of those trees, he says, oh no, so.
Well, Dennis, I thought that was on the inside, that was on the inside of the bend that they were talking about.
That can be a letter from us, we can send a letter to Country Club. Would you, would you mind drafting that paragraph?
I'll draft something, yep.
And I can sign it.
Yep.
I'll put it on Let ahead and sign it. And then the third thing is, okay, so there's plans that have the, the stop line on them and the signs, and you wanted, after being. And then the third thing is, okay, so there's plans that have the, the stop line on them and the signs, and you wanted, after being out there, you wanted those signs moved?
The stop signs.
No, 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 I, I identified on the sketch plan exactly where to put them. It's already, it's already been identified.
Okay, so your comments have been incorporated.
Shows them closer to the intersection, and that would obstruct the view.
Got it.
So I showed him and noted in writing where to put them.
Okay, all right, and he's, and the, and the, and the owner is going to install those.
Right. He didn't acknowledge receipt yet. I didn't hear anybody say, I'm not going to do it, or have any, I said, if you have any questions, I only sent it out Friday.
He was super cooperative in the meeting. Like, he jumped at the opportunity to put that, all of that.
On the drainage, back when we were.
In Phase 3, yes.
It had a lot of one, 1.5, one.
It had, it had .75s, it had .17, so now, once we go over 1%, that, it was, it was going to be over 1.5, and that would be okay.
All right, good.
2% is what you'd prefer, but even that's pretty flat.
And I was wondering, they, they were all pretty close.
Yeah.
And I was saying, I hope they can get the, the flow right.
What they have to do is, he's changing the design, he's increasing the pitch and the slope, and that changes where the pipes go in and out of the catch basins. So he has to have that locked in. They have to have that locked in so they can order the precaster, can send the order to the precaster to build the catch basins.
All right.
With the holes cut at that level. So that's what they're, that's what they were trying to do. Iron it all out, and we were trying to cooperate with them and help with them. Final thing, which is not one of your projects, just wanted to update you that the next phase of Mashpee Commons started a couple days ago.
Yeah, they ripped the trees all out.
Yeah.
I had a meeting with them last Thursday as well, prior to our meeting, and met the construction team. They started the following day setting up some of the irrigation, excuse me, erosion controls. And so they're, they're going to be, in a big way, clearing that lot that's probably already cleared.
It's all gone.
It is.
Yeah. They sent me some, they've been very good about, yeah, they've been very good about sending me pictures and so on. It's for Phase 1C and 1D, if I remember right, it's about a dozen buildings. I might be wrong, it might be 14, but it's all residential construction.
It's like what's there now, right?
I'm sorry?
It's like what's there now.
Correct, similar to what's there now.
I think it's all residential, no commercial.
There's not going to be a four-story building.
No.
What, how many stories?
No, I, I don't, I don't recall how many stories are, maybe, maybe it's two and a half.
Yeah, because the buildings are, they come up that road.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're going to be higher than the ones on Market Street, which is the, which is the way that intersects the East and the West Campus there. But, you know, a point of clarity, which is implied in all this discussion, but I think is good for the public to know, because our department's been getting a lot of questions about this, is that tree clearing is the already approved Mashpee Commons 40B. It's not the On Commons LLC, which is in the project eligibility letter phase right now, so.
Can, can you get that plan up on the website?
Uh, yeah, no, that shouldn't be a problem.
I think that might head off phone calls into Town Hall.
Well, I don't think so. Respectfully, respectfully, I don't think.
You know, in news, town news.
Yeah.
And Market, Market Street.
Yeah, it's just that one lot is so thin and it's so close to the development that even with the plans, I think a lot of folks are still going to be confused. But I, it, it started to fizzle out. It, it has started to fizzle out, because, what, the tree clearing happened last week? I think it was, Dennis, that was last week that they first started cutting? I'm trying to remember, yeah, yeah, so.
Now we got Ron, Ron, he goes start cutting the trees down the front.
They're not going to start any of the site work or drainage for a while, but they needed to cut the trees this week. They mobilized last week. I went and inspected the site with them, you know.
Yeah, and they, they told, they, what's that?
You can come up, because I, I mean, we might, I might hold your comments until I'm under the chair's report, but why don't you?
In a few weeks.
Oh, in a few weeks.
Yeah.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I'd like to just revisit a previous comment about the trimming of the inside of the curve on, on, on Old Barnstable Road. Trimming is one thing, trimming and maintaining it, because most of them are not big trees, they're brush that grows up each year and will obscure visual. So if you, if we're going to do a letter, trim it back and maintain it on an annual basis or something like that.
Good thing about it.
Because they're fast growing. I mean, it, it's just ragweed or whatever it is that just comes up. It's, it's difficult to get in there, walked it. I mean, it drops off.
It does.
You can't, yeah, you'd have to do it all manual, weed whackers and stuff like that.
Okay, so Lynn, you had a comment?
Yes, Lynn Barbie, I was looking at the plans for, for the Mashpee Commons, and something that I hadn't noticed many years ago, it seems that they have a street, Benefit Street, that exits onto Job's Fishing, right at where, where all the clear cut is right now, in that little section. There's a whole separate street that exits onto Job's Fishing. And when I saw that, I was like, I didn't know that when I was looking at the new 40B that might be exiting onto that same street. Is, is that correct, this, this plan that says that Benefit Street will be an entrance and exit on Job's Fishing?
That's where we walked in, it's already curb cut.
That's correct, that's correct.
That's right where we walked in.
It was the edge of the tree line.
Yeah, so that's been there for years.
The old edge of the tree line is where Job's, where Benefit Street.
It's gravel there now?
With the gravel.
Yeah.
And a couple of the buildings in that new, this section that right now, building number 70 and 71 are the 45-foot tall apartment buildings. So that's a lot of people. I'm just saying, it's not just a couple of the duplexes, that, that's going to be a lot of traffic there. And I just wondered if there's, they might decide to put another stop sign, because I think the stop sign at Market Street, as, as irritating as it was initially, is really a good safety thing.
Yeah.
There is a stop sign at Benefit and Job's Fishing, and there's a stop sign at Benefit.
Oh, there is?
Yes, and in Benefit and, and Market. Yep.
Not to stop traffic on Job's Fishing, just to.
Stop people on, that are coming out of the apartments.
At a benefit.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, don't want to.
But it's only on, the stop sign is at Benefit, not on Job's Fishing.
Correct.
So the only stop sign on Job's Fishing is the one at Market, that either, both sides of Market. Coming off Market, you have a stop sign, going up Job's and down Job's, you have a stop sign.
Right.
Okay, okay, so, because, you know, there's, that's just going to, but there's no plan to do another stop sign on Job's at Benefit?
Not yet. I don't think there will be.
So I think that, if it's okay with you guys, I'll send that into the chair of the select board who's preparing comments on, on Zero Job's Fishing, the On Commons application for a project eligibility letter, just so that they're aware that there's another curb cut going in there.
No, it's already there.
Yeah, I, I have not reviewed any of those documents yet. I've not seen any of that, not.
They, they have a little thing marked like a crosswalk going across Job's Fishing at Benefit. Guess that's what that hash mark is. It's like, it's a crossing.
Where did you get those plans?
I got them.
The building department?
I gave them to her.
Oh, okay.
I asked for them, and I compared them to the old ones from, from 2022, and where I had written down the heights of the different buildings. It's the same, the buildings are the same numbers as the plan from 2022. And it had, that has all the heights of the buildings, because we, I remember that there were two very tall buildings that were going to be on Job's Fishing. And those, that's building 70 and 71, and that's right what they're working on now, so.
All right, thank you. No, it's like.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
And, Ma- Madam Chair, if I might address Ed just briefly, the On Commons LLC plan, like, that's, all that is right now is a sketch plan, it's in the PEL phase. So wondering if they get PEL approval, then it'll be a, a 40B comprehensive permit application, and that's when, you know, we would initiate peer review.
Right.
Officially, so.
All right, anything else, Ed?
That's enough.
Thank you.
I will prepare the letter for the board, mentioning the clearing of vegetation and maintenance of that vegetation on Old Barnstable Road, and also consider the construction of a new intersection, and use the draft design that was prepared by Mr. Marsters' engineer, Mark Quanott, I may be mispronouncing it, Mark Quanott Engineering. And I will, I have a digital version of that, and I can also add, I will get out there and take some pictures of the area in question. I'll sketch something to add to that letter, so that will be clear. It'll be clear to the board where we're talking about.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Dennis. That's, that was good.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, did you go to that site visit too?
No, I was never notified.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, you were supposed to be, yeah.
Yeah.
That's Brian's fault.
I was probably doing.
Which site was it?
Brian has to make a mistake once in a while.
Wait, which site visit was this, though?
The Quasana Valley, so Rob goes up and down that, he's, he lives off of that street.
Oh, we totally should have brought him. We went in your truck, didn't we? Oh, no, we took two vehicles originally, yeah.
Sorry, Rob.
We drove all around the dirt road, too. You talk about dirt piles, they have some real big dirt piles out there.
All right.
All right.
We'll go again with Rob.
Uh, report on, I, okay, so I'm down to Chair's report, report on Chair's activity, none. The housing production plan approval. So we all got a letter, we all got a copy of the letter, right?
We already approved it, right?
Right, but we haven't announced it to the public as a board yet.
Oh, go right ahead.
The housing production plan was approved by the state.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's done.
You could send a copy of that approval letter to the Chair of the Select Board?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Good news.
That is wonderful news, wonderful. Town comments on On Commons LLC, application for site approval for Chapter 40B development at Zero Job's Fishing. They're in your packet. I, I did have a call into Jared Mayried, is that his last name? About his comments about the wastewater and our comments on the wastewater. I kind of wanted to get some clarification, just because our comments noted that the wastewater treatment facility is going to have to treat a large area. Mashpee Commons owns 180 acres total.
This 40B.
Oh, wait, let me finish. So anyways, so the way, it's, and I, and I want to say this because I think you were in the meeting, when, when Mashpee Commons came to us for the Activity Center bylaw, they clearly stated that the wastewater treatment facility can handle all the flow, by Ed.
By Eddie.
Thank you, everybody.
You, Ed.
Thank you.
But it's the discharge area that's limited.
Right.
So you read the letter from the wastewater management department, it doesn't note that at all, and I, I think it should, so.
So I did have a brief conversation with Jared about that, seeing, seeing kind of some of that correspondence there.
Yeah.
And I, I would say the gist of it is, is he doesn't view the two comments as necessarily being in opposite. What he was intending to say is that his preference would be for this project to go through local flow-neutral bylaw review.
Right.
And he was primarily focusing on the local mitigation component to that as opposed to the actual discharge capacity. So it, um, we can still include both in the select board letter. Does that make sense?
Yeah. No, we are, they are.
Right.
I just think that when you read his letter, you don't catch that, that that treatment facility is already earmarked for 180 acres of development. The way it's stated here makes it sound like they have plenty of capacity, but when you look at the planned development for the area, they actually don't. And I think if somebody read this too quickly, they'd miss that point. Okay, anyways, so, I, I, I hope he will call me back, I've been trying to get.
This is a 40B.
Yeah.
They could bypass a lot of the, I don't think.
I don't know what happens with the flow-neutral bylaw in the Chapter 40B.
Oh, with that guy.
So, yeah.
They said 40Bs must have bypassed a lot of them.
It's a, it's a local bylaw, but my understanding is it does track with state and, I believe, even federal regulations, like a federal order. So, we'll see.
We'll see.
Yeah, and I mean, that's the other thing to keep in mind regarding the discharge, both the, both the plant treatment and the discharge capacity, is that this project is proposed to be at over 10,000 GPD. So that analysis would buy, like pursuant to the CMR, be at the state level anyway. And that's the way a lot of these 40Bs, they do it, you know, like they basically get all the local approvals and don't really address treatment capacity because they're going to have to address it at the state level.
Right.
Like with these larger apartment building kind of complexes.
So if somebody's going to go after for the neutral.
Well, they will need to get, well, so that's, that's kind of two different things, though, although it does, well, yeah, I, I don't want to comment, I don't want to step out of my lane. But that is, that is two buckets, that is two buckets, so, yeah.
Well, on the Bon V project, 165 two-bedroom units, so quite a bit of flow. Where, do they have it on the plan as to where the outflow of that product is going to go into Mashpee Commons and tie in? Or do they need a different route going towards the wastewater treatment plant, and does it need a pump-up station or any of that discussion has been made yet?
So at this phase, it's typically just sketch plans, but they are, they have expressed their intentions to tie into the wastewater treatment plant, and I would defer to.
That's owned by Mash, and operated by Mashpee Commons.
Yeah.
To lay the pipe.
The discharge is right by the Mashpee River.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but, but from the housing, the new housing going in, what, where's the pipe going?
I, I believe it's cutting out the back of that lot and then connecting to the piping in the commons itself, yeah.
I don't think they're going to run it 28.
Yeah, because the commercial area, that, that commercial area of the commons obviously is already piped, and as is Market Street, unless I'm mistaken. It would make sense if it were, though.
Okay.
Set. Set, clarifying.
Yeah, I figured it would tie into where the existing buildings are and where the new ones are going in. I wasn't sure how they sold the property, the concessions that they were going to take.
Yeah, I think at the site visit, they, there was just like a little bit of chatter about that, and if I'm recalling correctly, they were talking about running the pipe out of the back of that lot. There may, like even need to be an additional easement to make that happen, and, you know, that's kind of part of the private negotiations between the commons and, and On Commons LLC, which are separate entities.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, Town Planner Report.
Yeah, so just briefly, I think, well, I don't want to, you're, you're the Cape Cod Commission liaison, right, so am I.
I am.
Mike is, that's right, we shuffle things around, yeah. So I don't want to step on your lane, but I was going to briefly mention the RPP update from the Cape Cod Commission.
Go right ahead, I, I need some ketchup time.
Great, so as we chatted about at prior meetings, the regional policy plan is being updated by the Cape Cod Commission, and there are some sub-regional public hearings that are going to be held in, or, that are coming up, and they're, they're going to be held on the following dates. So the first one is Wednesday, July 30th at 1:00 PM. That's at the Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors Building and the Conference Center in West Yarmouth, that's 22 Mid-Tech Drive. I won't go through all the addresses because this is in your packets and the public can access the packets. Next one is also Wednesday, July 30th, 2025, 5:00 PM, that's at the Falmouth Public Library. Thursday, July 31st, 10:00 AM, that's online and by telephone, there will be a Zoom link. Also Thursday, July 31st at 5:00 PM, and that'll be in the Eastham Public Library, Greg Turner Room. So that's important to note.
I'm going to attend one of them, so my.
Yeah, I'll get to one of them.
Constant comment on the RPP is that the activity centers that they have identified in Mashpee have never been vetted by the public. They weren't developed with public input, and asking them to remove them and replace them with a, an initiative to create growth incentives. create growth incentive zones.
All right.
So I've submitted that comment. I was, I, are you going to?
Well, if the, maybe, maybe the Falmouth one.
Yeah.
What do you know?
So if it's okay with you guys, I'll resubmit that comment from us.
Yep.
Um, and so you're gonna try to go to the Falmouth one. I'll probably end up going to the Yarmouth one.
But you're right there.
I know. I have to like sign out, and like punch out and take a vacation hour. Um, I did also, related, I did, um, I did go to a public hearing on the change to, uh, the regulations for development agreements. So the Cape Cod Commission did propose a change to, I don't know, is, I think it's Chapter D for regulatory agreements. And one thing that I noted was that, um, towns are eligible to enter into development agreements if their local comprehensive plan is certified with respect to the 2018 RPP.
So I.
So ours is, like overnight, ours is no longer certified. So my comment, and I did do it as the Planning Board Chair, was that they give us a two-year time period. And boy, did that go down like a lead balloon. So anyways, that was not well received. That was killed right away. I don't know if the Assembly of Delegates has actually voted on it, um, but I did send it to our delegate, who is Michaela Wyman-Columbo.
What about Ernie Vigilio?
Ernie Vigilio, um, uh, is not receptive to my communications in that, um, he wants them to go through the Cape Cod Commission staff. He, you know what I mean? Like he, I have always struggled having time with him to discuss things that impact Mashpee as the Planning Board Chair and him, the, the official representative to the Cape Cod Commission. For some reason, I do everything wrong, and he says, oh, I can't talk to you. So, okay. So, um, I, I do, I, he did not comment on it. He did not comment on it. But it got, it, it, it did not get incorporated into their changes. Oh, well, I tried. So, um, anyways, um, we have a lot of planning to do. We have some big planning documents to, we got the HPP done. I think there's the Open Space and Rec Plan and the LCP. So.
There's the sign that passed it in.
So that, that, uh, is actually something I could touch on just real briefly.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I did meet with the Town Manager, and we discussed goals and objectives for the upcoming year. And, uh, those two plans were on them, and I believe I stated, uh, you know, we're setting as a goal getting the LCP up for not this Fall Town Meeting, but the following.
Okay.
Fall Town Meeting, and then at least having before the fiscal year end, the, uh, Open Space, uh, Plan, uh, bid out and initiated as a process. So we'll probably start the bidding shortly for that.
And I, I'll send you, uh, I'll send you, uh, the RFP that Yarmouth used, cause it has the scope of work. It was good. I'll send it to you.
Great.
I'll send it to you, uh, cause it has the, the new, um, regulations, uh, that the state put out for open space and rec plans.
Great.
And I heard that those open space and rec plans are now good for 10 years.
That's even better.
Isn't that great?
No.
It's not, you don't have, cause it takes you about five years to do one, so, and then it's like out of date. So, yeah, so that is really good. Now, are you, have, have you guys decided what board or committee or ad hoc committee is gonna help you out with the Open Space and Rec Plan?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
So, um, I mean, we're always, we're always willing to help, you know, but you have that Environmental Oversight Committee, the CONCOM, um, we.
I know members of EOC have expressed interest in it, that's for sure.
And then, um, your Recreation Commission is the Select Board?
Yeah.
Right? And you can also do an ad hoc committee with staff and representatives from different boards or committees. But I, I hope I speak for everybody. We're here to help you with the Open Space and Rec Plan.
Yep.
Whatever you need. Yep.
Great.
And the old one is not that bad. It, it needs, it, I mean, it doesn't, the new regs from the state are gonna require more, but the, the list of land, you know what I mean? It, it's very good, and it has the maps, the lots, the descriptions. So there's, there's some data already gathered, so.
Great. Oh, and actually, speaking of data, I did mean to mention something when we were talking about crash data. Um, if you go to the Cape Cod Commission's webpage, they actually have like an interactive, like Cape-wide, Barnstable County-wide. Um, I, I don't, I'm not sure what the term for that, this tech feature is, but it's a map, and you can zoom in on an area, and you can extract crash data from 2016 to 2023.
Crash data.
Yeah.
It pops right up.
Yeah.
You know how you use it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's, it's intuitive. Like if you can use Google Maps, you can use that.
You can zoom in on intersection.
When you go into the site, where, where do you go for?
I haven't done it for a few years.
Yeah, if you Google, if you Google Cape Cod Commission crash data and thumb around for a little bit, you'll find it.
Okay.
But it's, it's for 2016 to 2023, I believe is the latest one that they have. So, but you can like, if you wanted to like look at the Rotary crash data, you could zoom in on that, and they talk about like minor accidents, major accidents, fatalities. So, you know, if you're interested in Old Barnstable Road, you can, you should be able to zoom in on that.
I don't know of any personally, but I know the police patrol that area big time to keep the speed limit at 30 miles per hour.
Thank you, officers.
Yes.
I've never seen an accident at that curve.
Me either.
But it's dangerous. And every time I use, do it, or go, go there, like I'm gonna go there in a few minutes, I always look for skid data. You know, I mean, it, it might not have been an accident, but you can see where somebody's doing an abrupt avoidance or something like that.
Right around us where we see.
But I've never seen anything.
Where we see an accident all the time.
I got hit there.
Is that Great.
You got hit? Hey, we got hit.
Great Neck Road North and Old Barnstable. And they're coming, when you're coming out of the one-way, you know, from 28.
Oh.
Right there. It's like, it just keeps happening. They need something there.
Yeah. But it's, it's funny that you mentioned skid data, cause most, the two sites that I think of that have the most skid data are not, fortunately are not in Mashpee, but are, are on Cape. One is approaching the Sagamore Bridge. I don't know if you guys have ever seen that, when you're approaching the Sagamore Bridge just before where the Christmas tree shop used to be. Yeah, that's.
I'm not looking.
Dangerous area.
I'm looking at, I'm like, I'm too distracted.
Well, when the road's clear, you can see it ahead, you know?
Oh, scary.
There's the bridge, and it's narrower and narrower as you're going up in the rain.
And then they have the traffic that's coming in there, too. That's what really, uh, and then, um, and like right beforehand, there's almost like, uh, visibility issues because, you know, not even, I think it's like a quarter mile before, beforehand. You can't see the bridge. Yeah, there's like that dip, yeah, and then it goes out. And then, well, I won't mention the other one. It'll make the town look bad.
They're breaking up ahead. I can't see it until I get over it.
Yeah.
She knows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So board member and committee reports, Cape Cod Commission, Michael?
I don't have anything for you tonight. I think he did a good job, but I'll make sure I get to one of these meetings and get up to snuff.
And then we, we have the reporter in our packet.
Yeah.
Yep. So, um.
We, we put that in there, so.
This, the, oh, the One Cape?
So, yeah, that was the main reason we put it in.
And the registration came open today?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I won't be here.
Oh, okay. So the One Cape is a two-day summit, September 16th and 17th. It's, this year, it's at the Witchmere Beach Club in Howard, which is just delightful. Um, and, um, it's usually very, very good. Um, and we do have money in our budget for people to attend. So if you're around, I suggest, uh, you go. I'm gonna, I'll try to go to one of the two days. Um, and there was, I thought there was something else in here. Oh, okay. Um, second to last page, state to host seasonal communities listening session. Join the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for three virtual listening sessions. Um, July 9th, oh, I think we, did we miss them all? Yep.
Yeah, it looks like we did.
Too bad. Okay.
That is actually a hot topic. We should see if we can get the material.
Oh, no, one's tomorrow. One's tomorrow on the 17th at 11:00 AM.
Yep. You have to register.
Well, anyways, it's virtual.
You have to register right now, tonight.
Yep. So that's the Cape Cod Commission reporter. I'm sure every, everybody here gets that. Um, it's very interesting. Okay. All right. Charter review committee, we meet August 4th. And I've, I've contacted the Town Manager to see if he would like some help to get a, a packet together, to get us kinda back up to speed. Um, Community Preservation Committee, I think we meet next week. Community Preservation Committee. Um, we, oh, okay, nope. My co-member is shaking her head, no. Um, we, the July meeting was canceled, so. Yeah, the July meeting was canceled, excuse me. All right. Design review.
Yes, we had, we got lucky. We had two of them, actually two people. We're like the Maytag repairmen over there. Uh, the first one was a company called Train Full, Train Full Send. It's a high-energy, um, training.
Oh.
Kind of thing. And it was Mark, Mark Connolly, which is signs, you know, and he just, all it was, was a sign 24 square feet. And of course, it passed, as it always does with him, because it's not more than 10% of the aggregate square footage of the front side of the building. That was an easy one. The next one was, um, a woman by the name of Sarah Thornburg, owner of Conchita Outdoor Learning and Play, wants to set up a daycare at her house on Coombs Lane. She can do that. She's in the R5. She can do it in a residential. Uh, the only thing was that she, you know, on the bylaw, she can only have one sign. She wanted a blade sign that looked like this, was 18 inches around on the side of the house to show the kids where to enter. And she said she would take it down when they're not in session. But we voted no on that because it's not allowed. She can have a sign out front of her house, but it has to be, uh, five feet from the end of the lot line. Or, I'm, strike that. I'm not sure. I've, I've actually forgotten that point. But the sign is appropriate. She can have one sign there, and, you know, I suggested to her that maybe she could just, to get the kids to go, just kinda block off, maybe put a plant right there by the walkway to the front door. She wants them to go to the side. So you must had plan review, and you had something to say about that.
So we did, Plan Review Committee did meet. I had a scheduling conflict. I had a, a meeting with, uh, the Chair of the AHC scheduled on about the same time. Um, but I was aware of that project. I mean, it's a, it's a six-child daycare, which.
With her two, I think she has two children, so eight kids. So maybe the first time they go there, as we said, they'll know where to go, which door to go in. They don't really need that blade sign there.
Well, the signage would be more design review, design reviews purview.
That's a design review issue.
Yeah, yeah. But, and Plan Review doesn't, for a daycare of that size, it didn't, you know, I, I chatted with Dave about it, and didn't really require a whole lot of planning department input because those are, you know, they're, they're mom and pop daycares that are run out of residential homes.
Limited number of children.
Yeah, and this, and that's actually also regulated by state law, you know, so.
Okay. Um, Plan Review?
Well, that.
Is that it?
That, yeah, would sum it up.
Environmental Oversight Committee? Historic District Commission?
No, but one's coming up soon.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, that, that'll be an interesting one, although right now, it's, it's just in the conversational stages, but yeah.
Um, there's notices of correspondence in your packet. Um, I don't see any additional topics. I detained a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.